Somewhere else.
Good evening, everybody. It's six o'clock. We will make a start. Thank you very much for coming. Almost at four house. This is the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting on Tuesday, the 21st of November, and it's at six o'clock. Does anybody have any declarations of any disclosable pecuniary interests? None? Thank you. Do you have any apologies for absence? We do.
Receive from council.
Thank you very much. Minutes to confirm the minutes of the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting held on the 17th of October, received by full council on the 24th of October. Are you content that they are a true record? You can see lots of... Thank you very much. Four, five, eight, approval of payments to receive and approve the listing of payments made since the last committee meeting. They would have been appendices A through to about F. Quite a few there. Any questions on any of the payments? The coding sheet was on the attachment, so it was a bit fiddly, but you are able to work out what some of it is if it's not immediately apparent. Are you content to approve the payments? Okay, can I have a proposal in second as well? David proposing and Doug seconding. Can you note that I'm abstaining, Karen, on the basis that one of the payments, I think, is probably to the About Bedford magazine? Terry?
I'm going back to apologies for absence. I know it's the town clerk isn't here. Did she say... She said apologies.
Yes, sorry, I should have said that at the start. Tina sent her apologies for this thing. Sorry, that's my... Happy with approval payments? Yep. He... Four, five, nine, financial report for the seven months ended the 31st of October. Again, that was circulated. There was the usual very helpful narrative from Alan. Thank you very much. Is there anything you wanted to add to that report?
No, it's very similar. I feel as if I'm generating the same report for one month and month with very small changes, which means that we actually going along with budget and there's no major change. It's surprised that it happened at the last.
Does anybody have any questions? If I understand the report correctly, and you would hope that I do, seeing the chair of the committee. There's quite a significant underspend at the moment because income has been greater than we anticipated and expenditure has been lower, which is good news. How confident are we that we will get to the end of the financial year and the underspend will be somewhere in that region? Bear in mind, it's quite significant.
After this month, November, the salary increases could have been, would be processed. So that apple cup, that will reduce the underspend in salaries and personnel. Our biggest saving and our ongoing saving will be in utilities. So our utility gap, that will grow for the next because we projected that to be quite significant from the first of October. I think we had percentage increases of 150%, and the actual increase is actually a lot lower. Remember, we prepared this in November last year, and that just happened to be when the energy prices were at the highest. When we signed the contracts in June, July, they were actually significantly lower than they were at that point in time. But that saving will be... We do have expenditure on the, that's from the amenities side on the open space management. We've really got to get that in order. We've been working, the team have been working very hard at the office to ensure that we can get graziers. So when we cut, we don't have the same challenges that we have next year. So those costs haven't been as high as we projected as well. So hopefully that will give us a saving. If climate change, anything could happen. But I, we're not aware of any costs that are significant costs. I mean, we've had one cost for St Peter's that we've been trying to get for about, you know, two or three months. That invoice actually came across by this today. So, and that's not significant, you know, it's a couple of thousand pounds for some work that they had to do to keep the integrity of the building and the roof. So fairly confident.
Okay. So next month, once the updates in relation to salaries happen, it will give us sort of true reflection of what a likely underspend could be.
Correct.
Okay.
Small bit. I know we cover, I think we're covering scaffolding and everything like that. That's a significant expenditure. Is that budgeted for? Or is that, it is budgeted for anyway?
We budgeted nearly £100,000 in our project budget. We have a specific line item scaffolding. So the cost of erecting the scaffolding would be funded from that. Cost of the weekly, the monthly cost that we incur, we paid the invoice today for the first time.
£5,000 a month.
It's £4,000. This fat, so it comes out of about, I think it's £3,600 a month. That's the first time we've actually paid that invoice. That's, that is the worrying cost.
How long is that going to be rolling on for if we don't act pretty soon and get it sorted?
We do have an agenda item a bit later on some.
Is that in your budget?
It's in the project's budget.
So it doesn't affect the value of your budget?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So our task with this one is to note the financial report. Are you happy to note?
No.
Yes. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 460.
So before you can add this, there were two things that I was asked to add. But I just wanted to do that. The one was the...
Oh, yeah, sorry, they're at the bottom of that, yeah.
So what I did for this is I actually calculated what the prepayment was at the 31st of October, 2033. The sure amount, the 8,612, that's our month-to-month. Our computer support is our IT protection, it's on our licence, et cetera. So that figure normally would be showing quite a significant overspend. So our prepayment, like I say, was, is quite high and will remain quite high. And the second one was the analysis of bank charges. We had indicated, there was some concern indicated, and what I've done is I've just put an analysis of that. American Express, they have the highest charge. We don't get very much from them. Our Barclays charges is, we do a little bit of... They come across as quite standard. I'm trying to remember what that 18736 was. I can't think of it from the left of me. Edelwein is our credit card fee. So apparently our fee is actually relatively low compared to other providers. And because we actually have our income mixes before COVID was about 70% cash, 30% credit cards, it's now the converse of that. Sometimes our credit cards can be as high as 80% of a bar taking. So you'd expect that. And then the Unity Bank charges are just the charges that come through on a quarterly basis.
The credit card fee, one is our other bank key, but people pay.
So it's the commission that we are charged for, by the back office for providing the credit card.
Right.
Yeah, that's useful to know that. Have we, when's the last time we reviewed the credit card service that we used? Because I thought that one was quite high, actually.
We, I get phoned, it's like when your utility accounts go into the market, we get phoned quite significantly. Our rentals are exceptionally low and our charge is a little bit higher. So someone tried to do a benchmarking exercise with me. They had a slightly lower charge, but the rentals on the credit card machine was significantly higher. So we should go out again and just keep doing that because, like I said, we, we get contacted quite often by providers.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't charge the...
It's illegal.
Use, yeah, that.
It is now, yeah.
But have we considered putting the, whatever people are paying for, that up by a couple of pounds to cover that £4,000 a year that we're paying?
I think the benefit to us is, for example, if I go back to pre-COVID, we were receiving our allotment fees. You know, probably about £4,000 of it through, through cash.
Right.
The staff issue of receiving the money, writing a receipt, the banking of it. So this, this amount compared to the opportunity cost of having a credit card facility is, is much better.
Okay, thank you. Okay. But at some point, it'll be something we could look at.
Yep.
No rush.
We always go shopping, as we say.
Any questions on those two little bits? They were on the action point list. Alan has tapped them onto the bottom of the finance reports. That's useful. So we have that information to hand. So item 460 is the review of the draft budget. This is the second time that it's come to us as a finance committee. I know it's been debated at a number of committees over the last month. So thank you all to contributing to that process. What major changes, Alan, have we incorporated this month compared to last month?
And what we've done is we've put in a more accurate salary figure because the 2025 salary budget was based on two years of estimate increases. So that's provided a little bit of certainty. What was really interesting though is that we had provided, I've got contradictory work papers, so I have to kind of work it out. But between seven and a half and nine and a half percent, we provided for, for this year. And if you look at our salary scale points, so what I did is I did a median and had a look at where, if you spread out where I'll start, where did that all sit? And they actually sit at the median SCP six point. To give you an example, SCP, what is the lowest? Then SCP sixty-three is the highest. So ours does sit at six hundred. The increase there even that it was brought with offer by the employers still came out at quite a high percentage. So our salary costs have increased percentage wise. And then of course you could add on, on the pension cost. So the savings, we had a pre-meeting, we can all, I think I created the impression that it was going to be quite significant savings because we had budgeted it higher. But the savings that were lower there were actually a lot lower than the current level. And the second thing that's had a big impact on us is I thought I was being very conservative in budgeting an increase in the property value indicator of two and a half percent. So that's as we added properties into Bedford, our property value indicator should, should, should increase. So if you put up, if your property value increases by more than zero percent and you put up your rate, your preset by five or 10%, you should get that additional income coming from, because you're just timesing the number of households by that. Unfortunately, the figure only came through late Friday and it's 0.57%. So that's a 2% swing in our income and it is actually quite significant. I was shocked, but I have to accept it because that's what, that's what present we're going to use. So we are, what it does indicate is that we're going to have to go back and re-look at the budget a lot more thoroughly. And I have to admit, I haven't looked at it as thoroughly as I, as I was hoping to. But for budget three, which we were tabled in, in, in December, we have to really go on through and work some of the numbers. So I will be going back to the committees and I certainly will be trying to workshop as much as possible and get some more input as to how do we do that.
Okay. Any questions, Alan, on the budget?
I know it's outside of your control, but is there any indication as to why it came out so low?
I think it's, what, what it is is the property values would increase it and the welfare, so housing benefits, counter tax benefit reduce it down. So it could be the fact that, sure, King's fleet has added to it, but the, the current economic climate may have brought it down again. I, you know, Breckland don't explain this to us. They just give us a nice little fancy booklet. You look for, you know, all the parish councils and town councils in alphabetical order, you look at Bedford, we are the highest in the Breckland district. We're about a thousand pounds more, more higher than, than Deirham, but it's, there's no indication as to why, why that is.
Thanks. Yep. So what is the difference between what the budget says and what we're raising through income at the moment? What's the budget gap?
I hope you've got our same question. It's £22,000 at that. So there's a lot of rethinking as to what, what we do and how we do it. What we have done is we've taken out venues and markets at a point in time, but we haven't taken out the fixed costs associated with this. We've only taken out the variable costs. So this is a worst case scenario because obviously insurance would change. There's a whole lot of other costs, you know, IT costs would change and reduce. But I just not in a position to kind of work that out yet. That's why we need to be a little bit more scientific before I do version three, because we can't cover the budget deficit. You know, that's, that's just the reality that we have. And we don't want to do a fool's budget because we just put ourselves, it's going to come back and bite us. So, so I think it's really a matter of, you know, there's a lot of work to do in, in December and that's where the focus has to be. And trying to getting that as, as, as budgeted, but realistic and credible.
Is that, is that the, we think we're going to have a significant underspend? An underspend that now been reduced by whatever amount?
We will still have, sorry, Chair.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, an underspend, yeah.
The underspend will help us this year. So, so we've really, we earmarked some a bit to go and, you know, for example, we've got a market coordinator and, and... But I, so, so the underspend will help this year. All it will do is increase reserves because what we do is the difference between income and expenditure is just carried forward to the next year. So it increases the reserves. So unless we create earmark reserves, which we have done at other times, that is a significant underspend in personnel. We had that a few years ago. We set aside, we set aside money to do some work on the, on the green energy audit that we had. So you could do that. So you could move some money from this year to next year. But you've got to have, it's got to be certain and it's got to be at the whole council level. Because you can't have one, 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 say, committee, significant underspend and, and ignore that. And then you have this committee with a significant underspend and you, you set that aside. It's like, you know, having two bank accounts in your own household. You ignore the overdraft one and you say, but, you know, and you, you set aside the, the, the cup that's, that's well, that's got a healthy balance. You still have the overdrops. Your disposition is what determines how much you can save.
The underspend this year gives us options that we might want to take to address the budget gap for the next two.
Next year's, yeah.
I'd rather be certain we have an underspend issue.
Be clear in my own head.
Yeah, no, I think it's a very good question.
Thing called, that's not going to be affecting this year's underspend issue?
Yes, but, but we also don't want to use one-off funding, which is what the underspend would be to plug a hole next year because we'll have the same problem the year after.
That's fine.
There are ways around that. So can I just check something as well? I think it's a typo. On page 19, where it says increase in preset income, preset value, preset, and then at the bottom it says increase in preset again. Should that be increasing council tax, that bottom line?
No, it's actually preset. It's what we, so that is the actual bit that will go into the, that will impact on residents. So they'll get a statement from Breckland in March next year. If it say one percent increase was that the town council and that 10% will be the figure reflected. Because the property value indicator has gone up by more than zero percent.
Yeah.
That 0.57 adds extra money to us and it adds, our, our income goes, would go up by 12.2%. So because that factor is so great, it's £6,700. So 0.5% of that is still quite a significant amount of money, whereas if we had a preset of £125, 0.57 would round it to £128, you know, it has a much smaller impact.
Okay. At what point will we be able to quantify what the differences in terms of people's council tax?
If we, if we did a preset of Jevandy today.
Yeah.
And it was the best budget, we would be able to calculate that. It would still be 10%.
Okay.
So the parameter that I've been given to work with is do not, council tax will not increase by more than 10%. So I've put that as a fixed number and my preset income is derived from that. After budget three, we might have to put it up by 11% or 12% or reduce it to 8%. We would then change the, the mechanics of that. But this is, the preset income is driven also 10% increase in.
Yeah.
In preset.
Potentially a bandy increase will be the difference between that 154 and 178.
Correct. And that's exactly 10%.
So yearly increase of £15, assuming we close the budget gap. The only other point I was going to make was on our transfers to reserves. Page 27, where in the proposed budget, we've put £35,000 APART renewal reserve, which has been slipped in there towards the bottom.
I think I haven't updated the schedule.
Because we were topping it up and then we've been spending it.
Yes. I, in the, in the revised schedule, what you did ask, and, and that's why I'm a little bit embarrassed, is because you asked the property appears to be restated.
Yep.
And I had done it on one of my schedules, but it just updated the presentation deck I hadn't done it. But that, that's taken into account the budget deficit of £42,000, the contribution to reserves figure.
Yeah. Bye. Let's get it now.
It is a work in progress.
Very grateful for the work you've done on that. We'll have a more complete version for December and then we're on track for adoption by full council at a special meeting in January.
Great.
Everybody happy to note the update on progress? Yes, thank you very much. Six, one then is the personnel report, which again was in your packs. Split to the right page. Primarily, the personnel report is a log of all of the training undertaken by committee members and staff members. One, two, four.
Stop retreat.
Twenty-eight. That's 29, that's one. We don't have a 28, that's one.
Turn around, look at the screen.
Hello, I get bad back. Does anybody have any questions on the personnel report?
I can just add.
Yeah, I haven't had that trained yet.
The one on the 19th of September?
It happened.
They've been rearranged?
Yeah, for next week.
Okay. If you just drop Alan an email and confirm the date, then we can update the personnel report and make sure it's accurate.
The town clerk did ask me to comment that she is trying to get someone from Breckland council to do the town council, parish council training. We filed off the emails. We're just waiting for responses. So as soon as that comes in, we'll put that out to councillors.
Yeah. Is there any other training or suggestions from people that would be beneficial? It's kind of like teaching you what you don't know you need, but, you know, this is, the personnel report, I think, is a really important agenda item around supporting and training councillors and staff to be better at our jobs, basically. Is there any requests from staff come through of any train? I, you know, I see people's names pop up and down, but, you know, presumably we're encouraging all staff to access training and that sort of thing. I know this is the town clerk report ordinarily, but I'll ask you.
I, I think we, there is more. Trying to help one of the senior managers in terms of the management course.
Yeah.
That, that hopefully is, is keeping results. But the rest of the training is we try to be more work specific. For example, we, we studied with either one staff member to do pay park inspections. We're now going to get another two staff members trained up and the staff member that's currently doing pay park inspections could actually move back to being full time in allotments because there's a lot of allotment administration that, you know, I'm going, this is not an allotment meeting because my face would be the colour of, you know, it would be bright red because we're just not getting through. So we're creating a little bit of capacity. And that's the end there. Just to get more, you know, safety training, that type of thing, that's really what we're trying to focus on.
Okay. I think that's really useful. So we are noting the personnel report as well. Thank you. Next item, we'll be on 462, review of the existing committee structure. In our terms of reference for our committee, we said that we would review midway through the year the committee structure that we've adopted. This is the first time that the committee structure is as it is. There's been similar examples in the past, but this is unique to this year. So I think, and I didn't check this last week, Alan, when we met, is this a report that you wrote on the town clerk?
It's a report I wrote. Town clerk has gave me some edits this morning, which wasn't the information that we charted yesterday, but which is now, which is in my brief.
Okay. So as a note going forward, I think for my own benefit, and I think it's useful for the committee, the named person who wrote the report on the bottom, I just think that's really important that there is an author behind it and need to know that. There's a number of recommendations at the bottom to consider, which we will go through, but you want to give us sort of an overview from an officer perspective, so you guys produce this.
I think what we've done is just, we've gone through the church references, gone through the various committees. So the last one was last week, Wednesday, I think it was. One of the things is, and, and this is something that the SFT has to take on the chin, is if you took all our church references and you put them next to each other, you would swear that we were completely different organisations, they have completely different formats, they have completely different levels of information in it. So one of the first things that we have to do as an SFT is get that right. And we've put that as one of the first action plans, that we've got to sit down and get church references that are, that are robust, that are very specific. Because what it does is it also helps us, I could get our delegations as officers, we know exactly what, where we stand and the councillors know we're delegated. So that was really the first thing that came out. The second issue was something that's come out about informal engagements with councillors, those councillors that have come and engaged with the officers, is a slight confusion between what town events committee does and what venues and markets does. And so we've really just looked at that and whether this review would like to explore that a little bit more as to what are the, is, is the confusion between what the councillors perceive the various roles and responsibilities of those committees are? And I think, you know, I mean, I'm quite confused at times because I have to allocate some of these costs, is it a town event, is it a venue, you know, is it a heritage town event, is it a venues town event? And it is quite confusing to really, to really, to understand. So one of the things that we've really done is try to provide a little bit of information and, and, and put that to the test. One that's really, that, that I am really concerned about is our property management. And I think it's been a historical issue, that property management has just fallen between the cracks in, in, you know, in a number of committees. We've just had the fire safety assessments which came out. Now, part of that is due to the new legislation that came out of the Grenfell fire issues. So new legislation has come in. But what, what, what we've got is we've got a situation where whose responsibility is it to ensure that these things are done? Does it fall within the officer that reports to a committee or is it the, is it the town team management? But I think what's happened is that there's a significant burden on the town team managers to do the, the property maintenance for all the committees. But yet there's no oversight. So the, the town manager, you know, works, reports into the amenities committee and does a fantastic job in doing that. But there's a whole lot of other responsibilities. So if there's a problem with the fires, fire alarm at the Carnegie Guildhall, the town manager seems to get drawn into that. And I think that's not appropriate and, and not fair. And I think the other thing is that there's the actual oversight. You know, if you look at the, at the committee oversight, you know, for example, venues and markets, their, their oversight states that they, you know, that there's a health and safety and there's a, a, a kind of element of the terms of reference. And yet that's not illustrated in terms of what the officers do. So that committee is not getting a report. You know, for example, that committee should have, you know, again, I don't want to criticise my colleagues, I would have made the same mistake and I didn't make the same mistake. You know, that fire safety report for venues and markets for the Guildhall should have gone to the committee at its, at its last meeting. And the fact that it didn't, I think just, it's not oversight, you know, it's not an intentional, you know, misleading of the, of the committee. It really is just an illustration of how the property maintenance just, that is, falls between the cracks at, at the committee. And then the last one is, sorry, the second last one is, one of the things that we came up with as, 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 as officers is to have this more working group relationship with, with the heads of the, of the committees. Now, this is not to create a, you know, another council and another committee and another part of organisation. But it's just to have a little bit of engagement to ensure that we, that, that, that we can get a little bit of direction before we come to committee. Because it's very difficult, you know, it's nice to come to committees, prepare them and, and have an idea of, of, of what the, the, what the feelings of councillors are. But it's also, you know, we've got things like the realising threat with potential documents. Some of those things, you know, I'm not really sure that we're actually necessarily addressing everything and that's slotted into a committee. So the idea is to have this kind of quasi government, quasi body. It's a working group, it's not, it's not a committee meeting. And it would just actually help in terms of that. And it doesn't necessarily have to meet, you know, consistently on the first Monday of a month, whatever the case may be. It may be, you know, we need some direction here or there's an issue, the council there. It may be, you know, we need some direction here or there's an issue at the council level that we'd like to take to committee. Can you go and do the, the appropriate work so that that happens? And then the last, or I keep saying the last thing as well. And the second last thing is communications. Uh, uh, we, we, I think one of the things since the, since the new merril year started, our communication uh, has really improved. There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of, uh, uh, social media requests and all sorts of things. And it's very noticeable, uh, uh, and, but we don't actually have a communication, you know, which, which committees are responsible for communications. I know, we know, we know it's venues and markets, but, but you wouldn't know that if you were outside the council or if, if you didn't sit, sit in the venue. So it's just a suggestion that that's, that that be highlighted. And then the last, and this is the last one, is the GW standard force. Uh, uh, we have a new GW, uh, standing, standing force clerk. Uh, uh, we, we, I think most people have already commented, we have a body, a, a corporate trustee. We have board members at the moment, we've got twenty four, it's a twenty four, twenty three board members. Uh, and it's just to look at rationalising that so that that can be forward. And that's what the, the paper.
Um, I'm happy to take a, a general point, David, but I think if we go through each one and then people can comment, do you have a, a general point?
No, I'm just somewhere around what I'm happy with and what I'm happy with. I think if you go through a bit by.
Threes, it's the way Alan's laid this out with seven points, it's easier to get agreement on each one and go through. Uh, because they are all quite, you know, distinct and unique. So the first one is about the need to standardise terms of reference. Um, and undertake that in advance of the next merril year. I would imagine that we would be all content with that.
Yes.
Yep. And that makes perfect sense. Um, I, so on that specific one, I'd actually be doing a bit of work today. Um, uh, must have had a bit of free time, um, where I've mapped out from my perspective, what I think each of the committee is responsible for in terms of services delivered. And I've outlined who I think the lead officer is, and I might be wrong. Um, and what policies relate to that committee, because I don't know about you, but I'm always confused about what policies a committee has the power to adopt. And then which ones need to be recommended to full council for adoption. It's, it's a dark art, I tell you. Um, so what I thought would be useful, if we pass these round and if people take them home and then fill in if there's anything you think is missing and bring it back. Um, because I, I think it'd be useful for all of us, particularly new councillors, to start mapping out who's responsible for what. Because if you're not on a particular committee, you'll never know.
Thanks, monitor. He's on the committee card.
So that's a, a bit of work for you all to take home. We can review that again next month with some comments. But in terms of standardising the terms of additions, that's all absolutely fine. So the second part then is about the finance and personnel committee retaining oversight uh, over the leasing of residential and commercial properties. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but that used to be amenities and then relatively recent year or two, that moved over to finance and personnel.
Truly, truly, truly right.
Yeah. I'm content with it sitting under finance and personnel. It's absolutely crucial from a budget point of view that, uh, those properties are rented. Um, members quite content for that to stay the case? Yeah.
Yep.
Good. And then property management oversight is allocated to a specific committee. Specific committee roles will need to be defined. So these would be properties that we own that are used for services, not to gain an income. The, the differentials, uh, properties that are rented out just for money is finance, properties that are used to provide services. So I, I happened to be at venues last week when they set their terms of reference. And they actually listed the properties that fit under the remit of the committee. So Guildhorn, Carnegie, um, the marketplace and St Peter's Church are all listed. We contend that property management oversight rests with venues and.
It's the venue, it's the venue, you know, you know.
That would be my view.
Why, why are we specific in that, in that respect?
We are reaffirming our consent.
That's fine.
Never assume agreement. Uh, generally happy with that? Yep.
Good.
Uh, and could we just further develop what that oversight can tell? So it's ensuring that things like fire safety, you know, I, I don't expect the committee to take responsibility for that, but just ensure that those things are done, health and safety, anything that's, so just to get a report back and say, yes, we're satisfied that those things are actually happening.
Yeah. So in, apologies, you haven't had a chance to see this either, but in the version that I've handed round, each committee will be responsible for health and safety linked to the work of the committee. I expect allotments will have, you know, very bespoke health and safety requirements, as will amenities with the cemetery. But corporate oversight of health and safety to sit with finance and personnel. So I think it's so important, we need to make sure the committees are taking that seriously and doing their job. But, um, venue related health and safety fits with venues.
So I, I would assume, sorry, I would assume that when you've got something that's specific to a particular committee, that would then be on an agenda item. And if there's nothing to mention, it's, but at least then it's a reminder to all of us that that sits with that particular body.
Yeah. And I can't remember how long ago it was, but Chris, you'll remember, we used to have a standard agenda item for every committee, which was about health and safety. So that if anybody had any concerns, they could flag them up. I'm not saying we need to go back to that. But there will be very specific health and safety requirements for each committee. So, you know, I can't sit here and tell you about, um, uh, heritage and events, health and safety. I'm not on that committee. You know, I assume they do a risk assessment for every event we put on, I don't know. So. Uh, for communications to be included in the name of the venues and markets committee, the budget at the moment sits with that committee. Um, depending who you talk to, it's the venues and markets committee, and sometimes it's the venues and communications committee. Um, so we would just merge them together and make that more explicit. Yep. Five, the heritage and events committee and the venues and markets community, uh, committee, also known as the venues, markets and communication committee, be merged or the event component of the heritage and events committee to be transferred to the venues and markets committee. There's a mouthful. If this option is pursued, then the heritage committee will need to oversee the heritage budget, which is essentially merril expenditure and the annual review of the civic policy. Discuss. I've got enough on the plate. You don't want to take on, um, what was it? Events.
I think as long as people know what they're doing and what events that, et cetera, they're, they're responsible for, it can stay as it is. The, the difficulty there is because.
I can see you know the line.
Sorry?
I can see you know the line. As long as you know.
Yeah, yeah, but as long as you know the difference. So, yeah, um, so the, the committee I chair would be in charge of Carnegie, for example, but not the events that are held there. And so as long as we can keep that distinction, I think that's okay.
Yeah, you, you, we all, we all talks to each other.
Yeah.
So that's fine.
Okay. I mean, so this is our chance to say that they meet every other month at the moment, and I would assume if they emerged together, they'd meet monthly. So there's no saving in terms of councillor time or officer time. No, I don't know. Mike, sorry, sorry, Mike, sorry. Um, it's the same officer who instructs us.
Can I be awkward and, and, and sort of spurring? I, I, I think you'd probably listen to me tolerantly and then say, yes, you would say that. Um, over a long period of time, um, it is a regular item on the agenda, perhaps every couple of years. The, uh, the, the borders between the committees are illogical, let's reform them. And we do it regularly. And in the end, we, we have to admit that it's probably not much better than the previous version. Um, if you really want to be totally logical about the same, the only way you're going to get it is by one committee. And then everything's there and you never have a problem with this should be in that committee, that, no, maybe it should be in that, oh, well, hmm. Um, I, it, it, it just, it just is impossible to be totally logical and consistent about what you give to the committees. And I think what we need more than a change is clarity in what the responsibility are, is, and we've now got that. So I'm rather inclined to think that the best thing to do, um, is to leave. From a personal view, this particular item, I, I don't have a big problem with merging two committees into one. I'm not sure that it achieves very much. Um, it, it doesn't reduce the number of meetings, it doesn't reduce the, the staff responsibilities. I'd like to think it made things more logical, but to be honest, you cannot be totally logical. You just can't. I'll give you a wonderful example from history, which I've refrained from doing, uh, unless you press me, which you won't, but just, 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 sometimes we have to say, this is one of those things we flap about every two or three years because it's not perfect. And if you'd like to show me the council is perfect, then we'll copy them. But until then, I think what we really want is actually the list of responsibilities, not re-dividing the responsibility. Message received.
Thanks very much. Annie, please.
Um, yeah, I, I agree with mine. I think we've, these are new, aren't they, this year, that just, we haven't really had time to um, to work at them. And that merging those two just seems really unwieldy. I don't think it'll clarify that. In fact, I think it's going to make it more confusing. Um, and make it unwieldy because there'll be so many things in a committee meeting. And if you've got to do that once a month, I just think that would cause more problems than it solves.
Be a bit of a monster.
Hmm.
Yeah, uh, it, it, as, as we've, as we've agreed, it doesn't really have, um, have an effect in terms of the amount of times we meet or, um, the, uh, amount of work for an individual officer. But of course, if we merge them, there would be a lot more responsibility for whoever chaired it. Of, in fact, and, um, so, yeah, I agree with you, Mike.
Annie, do you want to?
Sorry, I was just thinking, if we're going to merge them, does that mean we get double the number of people on the committee?
I don't know.
It's eight now.
I know, that's what I mean. So if you had that twelve or something, it would make it more difficult, I think.
Okay, so Doug?
No, I think I'm probably broadly in agreement. I was going to say, looking at this as a really show rate, there seems to be bits of overlap between them. But I get the points about, you know, I think just essentially probably some communication drilling down early on to new councillors. As someone who came into the situation with like, I had no idea what to come, committed to switch. Probably just communicating this a bit more effectively would do the same thing. Very likely the other points I've raised. I think it just, I like the idea in a sense of its neatness, but it just then becomes like a monster committee. And I fully take Mike's point about that, uh, if you, if you wanted, you just have one monster committee, which is very unproductive.
Uh, on, uh, hearing the consensus is to stick with the status quo. At least for now, Mike, and I'm sure we'll come back to it. So these things I like.
Yeah, about two years.
Broken glove and all that, shouldn't be eighteen months. Uh, so six, uh, the establishment of a councillor stroke senior management team working group to improve coordination and communication. Terry?
Um, I find, uh, so the, the way I work with, um, David Brooks is that I'll pop in and have a chat about him when I need to, and perhaps sometimes when I don't. Um, we'll work stuff out together. We work very well together. I don't really see what we would gain as a committee or as a council from having a, a further layer of management and and another meeting. And I, I don't really see what the gains would be from this, to be honest. Um, and I'm very much against the idea of a two tier council, which is, in effect, would it be? Um, so my voice would be a bit of a no on that one, I'm afraid.
The idea of potentially could get to the stage where one of the teams has been wanting to turn around and say, oh God, you did tell Terry, that for example, and relay it to Terry, you don't want to talk to me or to Chris or anybody else. So no, I, I'd like it, anyone can come in at any time. If you guys have got time to spare and talk to us, and we will communicate between ourselves as equals, not I am the chair of this, I'm on that committee and whatever. No, we, we're all equals here. As well as Labour guys, aren't we?
Feeling less valuable. You're an equal to me, Matt.
Don't need you to chip in. Yeah, anyway, that's, that's my.
That's fine.
Please, no.
Uh, I mean, my view would be that, uh, we are one of eighteen. And we're all equal in that sense, even as a chair of the committee, we don't have any executive power as such. You get a casting vote essentially, uh, and that's it in terms of the rules. So I do think we need to improve communication, but to the eighteen, not to the cohort of chairs. We massively, yes, I'm really pleased that we've improved external communication. We also need to improve internal communication massively. You know, if you're not on a committee, unless you then wait till the end of the month for the minutes to come out, by which point, you know, the world's moved on sometimes. We need to, when key decisions are made, we should all be told relatively promptly. And I, I think the, um, introduction of this new weekly newsletter will, you know, is a big help.
That's ridiculous. That, that's a positive news. On that note, I would say I'm incredibly helpful today, not least in filling the diary out. Um, it's, it's, it's really worthwhile.
Yeah.
Rather than filling it out piecemeal. So thank you for that.
I'd also point out that the membership of finance personnel already consists of the chair of finance personnel and the chair of amenities, the chair of heritage and events and the chair of allotment. And the chair of venues and markets and communications turns up.
So you're the chair of chairs?
Well, I'm just making the point that actually, you know, we are all here. Right, so that was six and the consensus is to not agree to that one. Yep. Seven, the number of councillor representatives on the GW standing for charity to be determined. Um, so at the moment it's twenty four, eighteen and six. Was it eighteen and four, eighteen four?
Eighteen three, because we've got a vacancy.
Yeah, eighteen and four on vacancy, including one vacancy. Any thoughts, feelings on this one, folks?
It's far too big, as Annie was saying. Oh, sorry, I'm.
That's all right.
Um, like Annie mentioned, you have a committee with eighteen people there. That's far too big. It should be halved and then you can actually talk, maybe get things done, move things forward and know what's going on. But then people might feel more engaged about what's happening. No, it's a far slower way of doing it.
Yeah. Terry?
Two issues here for me. Uh, the first one is, I've, I've worked on charities and, uh, been involved as a trustee and just working for charities most of my adult life. I don't think I've ever come across a trust with more than perhaps seven or eight people on it. It becomes unwieldy. Um, so I would advocate for a, a, a fewer amount of people on, on the trust. Um, the second point I would make is, um, count, being a councillor for this town council, as, as with most of our councils, is a voluntary affair. And we do this, you know, unfortunately I've got more time than a lot of people, some who work, we do this voluntarily. Um, having yet another meeting to go to, uh, for a lot of people, um, is not in the best interest of them or I think really the committee. So on that basis, I would, uh, I would want to, uh, narrow the number down quite substantially.
Yeah, but Mike and then Mac and then David.
Um, uh, uh, I, I, I'd agree that eighteen's too big. I'm bound to point out that the full council is eighteen and, you know, we'll step it up. And, and we have to make it work. And there is an issue about whether you want to make it work or not. Um, I do think that, um, uh, seven or eight might be smart. However, because of precisely what you said, it's most unusual to have eighteen, it seems more welcome to have a smaller number. And, and also because, um, we might be looking at there being more trusts in the future. Some of the members of whom would probably be town councillors. So it kind of gives us a bit of perspective or a bit of opportunity to say, all right, you're not on this one, but you might still want to go on the new one we're creating. So I think there's lots of reasons why we say eighteen is, oh, or twenty four indeed, is totally beyond the pale. Um, and, and I think they get more business done with eight or nine, should we say.
Okay, thank you. Mac?
Am I right in saying it's an eighteen four split?
Yes.
Or it's eighteen?
It was eighteen six and we reduced it at the last meeting to four, if you remember, Ali.
Okay, that's right. So I, I agree with everything everybody said. It's far too big. Um, most of the people, uh, you know, because it is so big, it means that you can sit in the background and not understand a lot and sit there not understanding for a long time. It's a terribly complicated affair, the way it's run at the moment. Um, one of my concerns is it is the split of what we've got. So I agree with everybody. I think a, you know, six people on a committee is enough. If you increase the, um, outside of council personnel to five, that's a really workable committee because not all of them are going to be there. But it also levels the balance up a little bit. And it gives us the option of, as you say, then having other commit, other trustee positions available. Any more than six and you're creating another whole committee. So what, eight is the most I think we have, isn't it? So if we add another two, we've got eight again. We've got another full committee, so six and five feels good.
David.
Hardly agree with that. And that, that's it. But I, what I would be interested in is that these, uh, non-councillors, how are they picked? Are they just, I'm a friend of the friend, I am whatever. I think we should, I don't know necessarily us, but somehow those lay members, non-councillors should be vetted or found out what interest they've got, what they can bring to the committee, and what added value, rather than yeah, I'm a friend of a friend and I want to be on that committee, so you can be.
Okay.
It's okay.
Yep. Chris, please.
Yeah, I'm not entirely agree. I think it's way too big. Uh, as cats and rather than trustees anyway, whether on the committee or not. My only thing would be if something happened like we had, example, the bones. Then we could all be told in as trustees to devote something. Okay, we can all have it.
I think, I think the point you're trying to make is because we are the corporate trustee, w- all eighteen councillors are ultimately responsible.
Yes, that's right.
But the day-to-day operations is handed over to the management. So you are, you're right in that sense. The buck stops with the corporate trustee.
Good. So some major, some major happen.
We just, um, um, I think the right word, divesting our responsibility to a management committee.
Very good. How do, how do the, the non-councillor members?
Yeah.
Nick, who are they?
I've really no here because I think one of the tasks for the new Standing Fourth Clerk will be to define the selection stroke recruitment process, because I don't think there is one at the moment. And so if we are reducing the number uh, of the total membership, I think it's even more important that the selection produces the right members with the right skills to support the charity.
Right.
Terry.
Um, given that it's, um, eighteen-three slash four at the moment, and we're going to substantially reduce, um, I don't see much scope for reducing the number of councillors and increasing the number of laypeople on there. Uh, so in that, in that sense, I disagree with you, Mac. Um, not least as we've got to recruit them. And I think get the feeling that the new clerk, the Standing Fourth Clerk, is going to have a work cut out, as it is, without going through the rigmarole of recruiting new people.
That's six and ten three, so.
I, I think six, yeah, six-three perhaps. I don't know.
I, I get what you're saying, but recruitment is really not difficult. It's, it's just not difficult at all. It's, it's a one-shot piece where that clerk does it or, you know, personnel do it. It doesn't, it doesn't really matter that much. But there's no reason, and, and, and when you use the term, David, laypeople, you know, outside of the council.
But we're laypeople anyway.
We are.
Yes.
And there's, and, and knowing, you know, I'm in other trusts as well, and I know that there are supremely better qualified people than all of us in here out there who, who would do us a real good service. So I think we would be missing a trick by not pushing those numbers up. I think we really would.
Okay, um, I, I, again, I'd argue against that. Um, this is difficult to say, I think, but looking at some of the people who have been there, they didn't really bring those skills.
But isn't that the point, though? If we recruit, if, if we recruit, with the recruitment process
Yep, yeah.
and get people that are going to add value.
So, so then it's not just a leasing process.
It is not.
Yeah, exactly.
Say, yes, laypeople, I mean, laypeople are, as you say, we are, but it's a case of recruiting the person that wants to do whatever is required of that post and having the skills to do it, rather than, oh, I fancy that, that's on my CV or, you know, just, just something, let's, let's add value to it.
Yep.
And ask the people why they want to, what do they think they can do?
Yeah.
And then, you know, that'll stay back. I'll be, I'm quite happy to.
Thank you. I've got Doug with his hand up.
I don't understand, I mean, actually, useful debate, but just, aren't we just deciding councillor representatives on this? And isn't the further discussion something that the Standing Fourth Clerk themselves would decide? Or am I misunderstanding the remit of the Standing Fourth Clerk? Just a process question for me. I thought, um, we're discussing the number of councillor representatives, which is one question.
Well, I think it, I think it matters massively, uh, what, what you pick for council representatives, if you know what the other side of it looks like.
Yeah.
You, you can't just pick one and not think about the others. So I think it's important that we discuss it at least.
Yeah. Um, okay, so there's consensus that it needs to be a smaller number. I've heard eight, I've heard nine, I've heard various suggestions for a split of numbers. Does somebody like to make a proposal, please? I suspect this, well, all of these, I feel more comfortable with these all bundled together in a recommendation to full council in any case. Please. Um, I would.
I would own nine.
With the split being, um,
six-three, yes.
Would somebody like to second David's suggestion?
Yes.
Mr. Brindle?
I, I think it's really important that if the, if the town council retains the ultimate responsibility, there has to be a majority of town councillors.
Okay, so we've got a proposal from David, seconded by Mike, which is a total membership of nine, made up of six councillor representatives and three co-opted members. Uh, those in agreement, please show. Those against? One, those abstaining, me, carried. Are there any other points, Alan, you'd like us to discuss under this agenda item? Are you content we've gone through seven? And they will form a recommendation to full council. In relation to the last one, when do you envisage that taking effect?
Soon as full council is met. And the reason I'm saying that is the new Standing Fourth Clerk has started.
Yep.
What if her to get her grip, that she has to work with representatives of the actual charity?
Yeah.
Or members. So if they, if, if they can be established, otherwise she's got to come back to eighteen, you know, eighteen or three. We, we're not, we're not going to get that. So if it could be, uh, with the first Standing Fourth meeting
Yep.
after full council.
I think, I don't remember who made the point down here, that one of the biggest dangers with standing office, because there were so many members and there was quite a lot of inconsistent attendances, votes changed because people weren't always attending and making consistent decisions. So I think having a hardcore group is actually really beneficial from a decision-making point of view and consistency, so, you know.
Which actually could go and have a chat to the new clerk and find.
Yeah, well, she's in post, so.
What they need, what they are looking for, what they would like the community to get involved in.
It's a pity with the, here's the Standing Fourth Clerk.
Yeah. Brian? Nine. Okay, I'm going to move on, folks. Thank you. I think that was a new, really useful discussion. Try not to repeat it at full council. Please note. Uh, item four, six-three, twenty-three, name badges, lanyards and uniform branding. It says lead chair. Uh, I don't know if this was deliberate, Karen, but my pack only has odd-numbered pages. There's no even-numbered pages. Ah, and I, and I think, uh, thank you. Uh, that's why I couldn't follow that bit as well. Anyway. Um, I think this one is actually really positive. Um, we've had a request from members of staff, um, that they would like branded uniform. The request initially came from members of the town team. Those of us that have seen them out there, you'd have seen them in all sorts of different colour hives and all the rest of it. But nothing that actually says Fettford Town Council, which I think is a huge missed opportunity. I, I've seen them out planting the market square with winter bedding plants recently, and they could be contractors, they could be anybody, but actually they are town council employees. Um, and as the report says, um, some of their items of uniform, we would have to be purchasing soon anyway. So this is just a change to, to request branded items. Um, I've added to that because actually what, uh, a number of councillors have said to me is we have absolutely nothing as town councillors when it comes to ID badge. We don't have any lanyard. We don't have any, um, uh, name badge. So when Terry and I went to the Anglia and Bloom competition in, um, Huntingdon, we were the only councillors that didn't have a name badge that said Fettford Town Council, which is a bit embarrassing. Um, and similarly for, for you guys, Alan, with the senior management team, as far as I know, I've, I've never seen anybody in a lanyard or a name badge or anything when you've, you know, representing a certain functions or public meetings or whatever. So this item for me is a sort of capturing all of that together. Um, uh, and moving the council forward essentially. So I think it's a really good news story. Anything you wanted to add as a way of an introduction?
The town team, the staff members have put quite a bit of pressure on the town team manager on that regard to say, when, when can we get it? And I think just to make a little bit of an anecdote, uh, when we, the town team, we moved all the plants from, and put them out, off them to the, the public and some of the posts where we saw these workmen, we don't know who they belonged to, stealing parts from the, uh, 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 town's flower displays. And me and one of the staff just taking them out to bring them to, for people to reuse. So I think that kind of fills the story.
Thank you. Uh, Terry then Mike, please.
Um, as a member of Fettford Town Council and as a resident of Fettford, I'm pretty proud of both things really. I love the town. Um, let's shout about it. Uh, I'm led to believe that my, uh, the committee that I chair now involves comms officially. Um, in terms of communications, yeah, a- a- as you say, Alan, it i- it's a bit of a no-brainer, isn't it? We, we, we need to shout loud about who we are and what we're doing, I think. And this is, this is one method of doing so. So I'm, I'm all in favour. Um, on the, uh, on, on the papers, it says for the town team, I would extend that. And, um, I don't know if you're going to thank me or not, um, I would extend that to all officers.
Yeah, I'm agreeing.
Sorry.
I, I'm really annoyed at myself. I looked out my old, uh, lanyard from the deep and distant past and meant to bring it and wear it proudly. Oh, because of course I look fifteen years younger. Um, I did want to ask one serious comment, which is in, in the top bullet point, is it? Yeah, it's, there's a brackets, including safety footwear. Now, I would have thought, I don't feel that you need to brand it. But, but presumably the staff already who need safety footwear have got safety footwear. So where's the extra expense there? And what, what's the change there?
It's a renewal, yeah.
It's reu-, wha- wha- unfortunately, when we got the quotes, we got it for the whole package of things, including branded uniforms. So my town team manager, he has helped me so much on this. I didn't want him to go and break down the quotes, so, so it's just to show that it's all, you know, if we were looking at costing, we're going to get more staff men, more staff members in the town team. It's about two hundred pounds, and that two hundred pounds includes football.
So, so it's not like footballers having the names of their kids.
No, 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 no.
Brought it on their.
No, 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 no.
Right.
It's just that it includes, that's part of the uniform.
Yeah, which we budget for anyway, so, yeah. Uh, so the decision required is whether or not to purchase lanyards for councillors. I think it should be lanyards and name badges, because if you go into a formal function or, you know, civic reception or, or we do the, um, Remembrance Sunday, we're all in there. Nobody knows we're a councillor, lest they happen to know who you are. Um, so name badges. Purchase name badges and all lanyards for staff. And I think picking up Terry's point, um, uh, all staff, not just town team. And there will be occasions when lanyards are appropriate and occasion when name badges are appropriate. Purchase branded uniforms for town team staff as well as the market supervisor. Noting that the Carnegie staff already have the Carnegie branded, you'd ask. And.
Sorry, with the clothing, um, some of the staff, I mean, I'm not big on Katie in particular, she's, I have five, walking around the lots, um, will be jackets, in terms of being clean.
Um, is Katie part of Carnegie or?
Well, she's a bit.
Yeah, she's a bit more events team, yeah.
With a Fettford logo on it somewhere would be nice.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm going to go further, a little bit further than that. Um, Stacey, yeah, I would, yeah. Um, Stacey, who, uh, who's been so good coming in to coordinate the market, um, yes, has a Fettford logo. She we- she wears a hives jacket.
Yeah.
Yes, have a Fettford logo on, but also have a title on as well, because then people know what she's doing and she's moving about the market.
Yeah.
Doesn't have, sorry, it doesn't have to be hives, but just a knife.
Yeah.
Hided if they want it.
Yeah, but it does have fleece or something like that.
Well, I used to have a reversible one.
Yeah.
I'm looking at that, so you would.
Yeah. Mister Chairman, have we got a colour scheme? Is that relevant or necessary?
I don't know.
Do we have a council colour scheme?
We've got a logo.
We've got a logo.
We've got a blue for sure.
There we are. Is that our logo? Is that it?
A logo, I mean.
Oh, yeah, that's the logo, yeah.
I've seen, I've seen the cow because the colour scheme.
That goal.
That's, yeah, that's going to be quite a difficult shade of colour to get for a jacket.
West Ham manager, right?
Yes. Yeah, from stuff. One of, one of the int- I mean, I'm wearing one now, actually. But one of the interesting things is if, if that's a Fettford Town Council on there. But importantly, if it's got it on the back, doesn't matter what you're doing, people can see who you are and where you are. It makes, that makes such a difference. I had a, a group of volunteers, we bought branded clothing for, and it was only on the front. And it didn't take much for them to get covered up, not seen, and people were asking. It's worth having it on the back, extra expense. And one other thing I would ask for is, if we're going to have, um, name badges, particularly for the councillors, if we can get the ones with strong magnets on rather than pins, and thickly for ladies and, and, you know, my delicate clothing.
Oh, sorry, that was your question. Um, can I suggest then that I completely agree with Mac's point there? Um, if we, so our job is to set aside the actual budget and approve that. And then Alan and the team can go away and work out the specifics. Um, noting that we're happy for this to be done quite quickly because I don't want anyone to be without particularly safety boots and stuff like that. Um, if we put, uh, two and a half K aside, which I think will be more than enough, but it gives some flexibility.
Flexibility on that today, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm happy to propose that. Would somebody like to second that?
Yeah, sure.
All in agreement?
Yep.
Agreed. And that will be coming from our, uh, underspend that we've got, so transferring the money over us.
Do we get, sorry, will they send the design to somebody? Like, like Mac pointed out, that is nice and
Yep.
Simple.
Well, now we've changed the parameters around lanyards and name badges and logos on the back and stuff. Um, they can work up a sort of detailed
Great.
shopping list.
Yeah.
Come back to us for the proposals. I don't want to come back to the next meeting. I'm happy for that to be circulated. I don't want to delay anything.
Just give it to thing using markets or somebody
Yep.
for them to make a decision.
Be a great picture when everybody's wearing it, doesn't it, Nick? All the team together.
He would be very strongly in favour.
Oh, is he, Mac?
Yeah. Right, so wrapped up with agenda item four, six, three. Thanks very much, Adam. It's really a positive step forward and, um, uh, I assume the staff will be, to an extent, involved in the sort of design and that sort of thing as well. I like to get their inputs in as they're requesting, yeah. Uh, four, six, four, update on the implementation of the transparency code and financial timetable. You used to always present this sort of thing to the finance committee, and we've diversified your workload lately, but, um, governance is your thing, really, isn't it?
I, I really dread a bit of putting this on the agenda because you don't know what you've actually done, haven't done, and so you actually come and fill in the, the paper. So essentially what we did, we start our year in July, that's when the original timetable starts. So it starts in July twenty-three, and it goes through to March twenty-twenty-four. So it's June twenty-three-four. Sorry, I haven't put it in that order. It's just the way that we've, we've put financial years. So the columns in blue at the top there is basically essentially what we undertook to do in, 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 uh, from July to November. Uh, green means it's been done, uh, red means it hasn't been done. Uh, so there's, um, in terms of the financial timetable, the assets inventory, we were hoping to do that in August. Uh, we just haven't, it's just been a madhouse, and we haven't had a chance to do that. We will probably do, try and do that in February next year. The other thing that we haven't done is, we didn't do it, we only had this all approved in July. The other thing that we haven't done is, we didn't do it, we only had this all approved in July. So we didn't do the feedback in August. But we'll do, we've done it to November. So you'll see on the transparency code, the governance side, that that's, that that's, that's in red. We won't make that up. And I think by reporting it now, we've actually done that. In terms of the transparency code, we started off, we have been very good at doing that. The nice thing is we haven't had the contracts, so that's why this piece of paper to, to, to put in things. But all the spending information is done in terms of the transparency code and that's it. But the, and those dates are on target. So we don't see any, yeah, but it's to give the assurance that if someone ever says to us that we're not complying with the transparency code, we actually are. Having said that, that I have to warn you, on the old website, to find the stuff you need, you need to be a, you know, treasure hunter of notes. Because it is exceptionally difficult. It's just misfiled and things are put under the transparency code that are not transparency code. But we've just started off and we would, when the new website comes in January, we will make sure that there is a special section and each of these items has a, has a sub tab. So that anyone can actually keep track of that. I can breathe again.
Yeah. Any questions? No, happy to note the update. Thank you for your work on that. I sort of have, just for you have diversified the last few months, so, but, you know. Things are being progressed, which is good. Four, six, five, update on the recent fire risk assessments. Apologies, I think most of you received this either today or yesterday. There's an awful lot of information there. I don't expect you all to have read all of those reports. There was actually quite a lot of papers for the meeting in total, so you're forgiven if you haven't read them all. I think it's useful, as well as the covering report and the summary that's been produced, that you have access to the full information to, to read the sort of rationale and the report. At the moment, this is primarily for us to note because Alan and the team are going to produce an action plan. But there's quite a lot in there, so we wanted to make sure you had early sight of that. Is there anything you want to add, Alan?
I think what it does also is it highlights this building in particular. And it's quite relevant because of the decision being made at the previous for council. We have a significant challenge with the upstairs area here. We have to close off the one above here that beats off this room here. And one that beats off the entrance hall, we have to do something serious. We've got serious archiving backlogs. And that has to be addressed, you know, that's set to us basically immediately. And if we don't do something as offices, you know, we might be choosing where we spend the next fifteen years under hard labour. Because we're not politically under, under physical labour because we have to, we are going to be in big trouble. So we've really got some urgent things. So even if we weren't moving out of King's House, these are some of the issues that we have to address. So it really has given us a bit of a fright. We've had our first meeting today, we're putting all the action plans together. And we've really got a lead on that. And the offices are responsible through and through. There's no delegation of accountability or responsibility to us. Because you brought us to your attention, but it might also influence the budget because we're going to have some costs that we're going to incur that we, we, you know, that we didn't really expect. So archiving, we've got mass destruction. I mean, we've got accounting records going back to goodness knows how long ago that could have been destroyed, but it took seven years. So we might have to give one of those shed stations, trucks parked outside and we just feed down the staircase into there.
I've just had a visit to the Stanley Fort.
They're also a problem. That's for, that's for the new board members to, to resolve.
In all seriousness, I know, well, I've read all, I've read all of the reports and there are quite a lot of immediate actions and some longer term. Some of them are quite simple, like removing storage heaters and that sort of stuff, which is, you know, an easy thing to do. Some of them, you're going to have to get quotes from contractors, which is going to, you know, just getting people in at the moment to give quotes for things is quite difficult. Do we have enough capacity in the staff team to implement all of these actions?
Well, what we're doing is putting them together and then allocating responsibility. I mean, we're going to have to bring someone in to help in the archiving. The basic stuff of here is a file of old credit invoices going back to twenty twelve is relatively easy. You know, they are filed in, 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 in that, in that way. So we are, whether we get a temporary person in to do that, I've started to look at some of those costings today just to see, because you don't need a skilled person to do that. But you do need a skilled person to be able to answer questions. Is this valuable or not? So we're going to have to come up and say, well, this is, you know, start off with this, get rid of all the, all the accounting records. And then the other stuff we're going to have to work through systematically, but we are going to have to bring people. You know, the team just are too stretched to be able to do it themselves.
Great, and this is where do we, that is the books going? Because the records are one thing. When we were up there having a look around, some of the paperwork, the invoices and stuff like that, does go back a hundred years.
Yeah.
It's the books. Where are the books going to go?
That is a challenge that, I think the new Stanley Fort board are going to, just as we've said, property maintenance becomes an issue for some, some of the other committees. I think that's going to become an issue for the, for, for the, for the charity. They have to do something. I mean, it's been flagged up in the viral risk assessment. At the box as they are currently stored, it's not safe.
Are they liable for the fees for this? Are we liable for the fees for this?
In terms of the report or implementing the recommendations?
Implementing the recommendation on this place in particular.
In terms, so for example, that fire door has to be fixed. GW Stanley Fort will be, will pay for that. Sorting out these two rooms is definitely a town council responsibility. We've got to change issues in the hallway here. That would be a standing forth. The store's going to change and all those things. So what we, what we'll do is we'll go through and actually isolate those, but everything to do with content in this, in this building. We can't expect GW Stanley Fort to sort out the, the archives of.
But they're there, but they're there for books.
Their books, they will, they will have to come up with this.
Yes, they can come up with somewhere to store them.
Yes.
It's, yeah, it's their property.
Yes.
That's fine.
Terry then Mike, please.
Sort of two reasons for suggesting this. One, in terms of greater engagement from the town in terms of the actual house itself and what's contained within it. And also financial. Would there be any possibility of, instead of trust is a trust, it is charitable? Would there be any chance of getting a volunteer group to move in to do this? It, it would seem to offer us a bit, a bit more than council employees in terms of town engagement, making a big hoo-ha about it, you know, save, save the King's House, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I think we have a problem with the number of people that would be up there at any one time.
I'm sure you're right.
So, so I think that's a great idea, having volunteers involved, but the number.
Oh, they need managing, without doubt.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that can be explored. Mike then, Annie.
I, I, I think we've got some obvious problems. It's actually, I did go through it this afternoon and it's a big job. There are little bits, little wins, like the one you mentioned, just moving something that's blocking a door, that's, that's fine. But, but you almost need an architect to deal with some of the paperwork. I think the books is a separate issue and actually personally, my suggestion would be that we seek to dispose of books. And I could give you a reason for that if you wanted. I do think that what we ought to be looking for is, is to have a dated plan so that we say, by Christmas, this will be done. By the third, first of March, or whatever, so that we know what, where the priorities are and how long each of them might take to solve. So there are root plan to get through to the point when we can say to them, our officer, you'll come again next year, you'll find it different.
The action plan that's being produced, will that have dates on?
It has to. Otherwise, we as managers and officers are, you know, we're in trouble. We don't do that.
Annie, please.
With all the stuff in the attic, where's it going to go? I know we can get rid of a lot of it, you know, but there is stuff that is going to be kept. Or stuff of interest for the town, isn't there? There's old maps, there's old photos that would be useful to be somewhere and be displayed. But all the other stuff, does it go to Norfolk Records Office? You know, because, because even if you sort it and you say, right, we've got to keep all this, it can't stay up there because it's still a part of this.
And there's a lot of stuff.
You can read it as well. I agree with you, Mike.
We, we were told when we walked around that, um, records office didn't want anything to do with it.
I think they'll come and help.
Oh, that'd be good.
No, not help. I think they'll come and tell you what advise rather. They won't come and.
Okay, yeah.
They advise what you should keep, but they won't do it.
Well, that's, that's reasonable, isn't it?
And they also, and somebody said that when we moved to Carnegie, there's some of those pictures and stuff.
Mm, that goes well.
Would be wonderful.
Yep.
Around the walls. If you're going to the Weather Street place, that's got lovely pictures of the town around the walls. Now, the stuff in there, there was a beautiful picture of, of Stanley Fort. Sitting in that gorgeous chairs downstairs and the, and the guy who's, yeah, Charles Burrell. And we had the first Black Mayor in Buckingham and there's a picture of him up where?
Oh, is it?
No, no.
Sorry.
Sitting in that chair that's downstairs. It's a fantastic picture. And that should be on a wall somewhere.
There's plenty of scope for putting a lot of stuff in the small and large halls.
Yeah.
Plenty of scope.
Do you need anything from us as a committee to help with implementing it?
No, we just have to bring it back and make sure it gets done. I think that the action planning is the critical part.
Okay. So, we're required to note to the report. Will the first draft of the action plan be ready for the December meeting of the finance committee? So can you make sure we table that so we have oversight of that? But I suspect some of it would have all given action by then. Easy bit. Any other comments or questions on fire risk assessments? Yep, thank you very much. Four, six, six, update on the Guildhall scaffolding. There is a written report in your packs. I know this was discussed at the news committee last week, which was actually a really good discussion about that. Alan, anything you want to add?
Her, English Heritage have come back to us today, so we were really bad thing to get hold of them. We've been emailing them constantly. They came back to us today, late this morning. They've offered to come meet on site. They've offered to bring a structural engineer to, to, to help us. And the whole thing is really is to get to a situation where we can decide what to do. Can we cap those, those two towers and make them safe? Or do we need to, I mean, my understanding is that we basically, we have to make them safe until we get funding. That's what we really have to do. And we're just working, you know, I was, had a bit of hands off when I, this all starts about getting more and more involved. Working with the town team manager, who's, who's now ended up being tasked with this. And we just, we really are pushing to get, to get structural engineers and to get an opinion. All we need is an opinion as to how, is it safe to take down the scaffolding? And how do we make sure that those two towers are safe? And if someone gives us that piece of paper, that scaffolding will come down ASAP. I can just, I mean, we've, we've got another second structural engineer, which, which we, I think they need, they're coming tomorrow to have a good look around. And if they give us the sign off script.
Okay, can I come tomorrow?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Let me, just let me know when it's there. That'd be lovely.
And is that an opinion on the internal and external scaffolding?
It's to look at the external so that if they decide that it's safe, we can then get, get, I mean, they have to look at everything. They have to take account of everything. Because the risk apparent is that forced through the ceiling. So, 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 so.
But the previous guy said that the internals are not doing anything, which the internals are irrelevant. So we just need someone to say.
Yeah.
And be in writing and then that job done.
That, that was exactly the impression we were given at the committee last week.
Yeah.
But the timeline is there. In the reports, there is a timeline.
Yeah, I saw the, yeah, thank you.
So, so it's just, at least it's a complete.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, folks, on scaffolding? I think it's important that we have oversight of this. It's one of these things that sort of slips between different committees. But because of the financial implications, I was quite keen for us to, to have oversight of it because it's a lot of money. And, you know, these things can move quite slowly sometimes, but it seems that the officers are putting pressure on. The people that need to have pressure put on to get a decision so that we can take next steps. Okay, four, six, seven, logging and reporting of complaints to note any complaints received since the previous meeting.
Our internal procedures have fallen down in recent years. So, so I think, you know. We were reminded that we hadn't been complying fully with our own policy. So what we've done is going back, it's a two-step approach. We're going back from the last two or three years, we've had about three complaints. We'll get all the logs done and put that in, you know, get, get the internal processes done. Since the last meeting of this committee, there has been a complaint. That complaint was really around the historical accuracy and appropriateness of, 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 of what are the heritage events. We have followed the protocols of the, of the policy. So we, we received a complaint at the second, we acknowledged the complaint at the second. We sent the complaints policy to make sure that the complainant was aware of that. And we responded this past Tuesday, within the, we have ten working days, we did it slightly earlier, we responded to them. And we're just waiting for their feedback. If they decide they don't accept our response, it then comes back to this committee for consideration. And, and then the third stage is to, the complainant can refer it to the local government on this bit. So that is really what's happened. Our policy also states that it has to go to the committee that's responsible for that, for that complaint. That, it should have happened last week. So, so again, as officers, we apologise. But that, that system will be put in place so that we're fully compliant with our policies going forward.
The policy being sent to the member of the public. That particular policy was due for revision in twenty eighteen.
It's bounced back in twenty twenty. Yes, it was, it was produced in twenty eighteen, subject to revision in twenty twenty two.
Oh, okay. Well, that might be the right way around. When are we likely to see that again and adopt it and make any changes to the policy?
I think another task that we have to look at from an SMT perspective is we have got more, we have got so many policies. And I think looking at your exercise, having a chance to study this, I think it would be appropriate to allocate those to the various committees. And then come up with a systematic action plan and say, well, you know, in a, you know, this, this policy needs to be revised every two years and have a rolling calendar. Because the last thing you want to do as councillors, you receive forty, forty policies at one particular meeting. We just need to stagger them and put in, and put in the review dates. And I think the last issue we had about the cemetery, you know, that was an example of where a policy had been written so many years ago. It was written in a document supplement to, to a policy and that document had fallen by the, that wayside. So one of the tasks that we have to do as SMT is we have to actually go to all the policies, do, do that review and put in a, a program to do it.
Could those policies, when they've been done, be attached to the website for like a member's login, like I was threatened? I don't want to make a copy of them, but I would like, if I wanted to, I'd like to be able to see every single policy that we have.
Want to comment on that, Terry, because I know that was discussed at the website meeting.
So there will be a, a login space available for councillors.
Yeah.
And I think that's exactly the sort of thing that will be on there.
Brilliant, thank you.
And that will be for the non-public facing.
Yeah.
Policies and procedures, but there will also be a section for the public facing. And I think that will tie in quite nicely because somebody's going to have to go hunting for all of the policies uploaded onto the website. So hopefully they'll find it.
Sometimes it takes it for the next group of councillors to come along.
But loads of easy.
We have done all the work.
I know, I know. They're welcome.
Just one other comment is, is just one of the things, I mean, I, for example, some of my committees have gone, that I have support, you know, the amenities committee, for example. We've done an open space policy, we've done this four grants policy, do you know how long it takes? I mean, just to get those onto the website, you know, it's just one of the things that's, it's so difficult. We just don't have the capacity. And I, I hate to use that word, but we really are bad thing to put in place the internal processes to ensure that straight after meeting, someone goes and puts work and someone.
I think there's also a need to determine if we need individual policies or if we can merge some of them together. I think we have too many policies and they should be.
Just breaking through to.
Yeah, and let's merge some of them together. We had a social media policy and we had a media policy. So one of the things that the Benews and Comms Committee did, merge them together. So you have a media policy that includes a section about social media.
Yeah.
For example. Okay, so there's no decision required. We're just asked to note that. There's no decision required. We're just asked to note that the officers have dealt with the complaint. And it's up to the resident to determine if they want to escalate that complaint and if they do, it'll be back here at a huge meeting. In the meantime, we might have a look at the complaints policy. Four, six, eight, correspondence to note and consider any correspondence received.
No.
And the officers update to update on any information since the agenda was released or which requires the attention of the committee.
Uh, this is one matter. We have employed a parker for the for the charity. Uh, we do not have any infrastructure within the charity to make payments to the, to that park. And really it's just to ask that we go through the F E T Town Council, use their payroll system and structures and and P A Y E numbers and employee insurance. And we then recharge that back in full to the Stanley Fort Trust and it's just to get that. To notify the committees of that approach and if there's a a problem with it.
The contract that that individual had, is that based on a local government contract in terms of terms and additions and pension?
It's only been posted on employment. Uh, at the moment.
Okay. Uh, happy with that, yep. Uh, action points, I'm going to use Alan's list because mine is missing a page. Uh, so how do you have time? Yeah, we've got time. We'll go through these and see which ones we need to remove. So we've already mentioned F E T Town Council website is still being developed and policies are to be added to the website once the update has been completed. And you would have seen from the update newsletter, um, that we are on track to go live with the website from January. Um, and there will be a soft launch early December, so all councillors and all staff will be given access to the website. Um, uh, via a password, uh, in December, if you to go on, have a play around, read it, make sure. All the links work and test all the buttons and all the rest of it, uh, over the Christmas period and come back in January with any last minute changes. And then the final changes are implemented in January and then it will go live. Um. Uh, Ter- uh, Terry and I had a meeting with David Brooks and Hazel last week. Um, and I will say, the website is so much better than the past website. It's significantly better.
Nine day.
Yeah, nine day. Really, you know, really good work gone on there. Uh, risk management, the lease between Norfolk County Council, F E T Town Council and the Charles Borough Centre is a potential liability and should be investigated. The chair suggested that an exercise quantify the liability as a party to the lease. Did you want to say anything on this now, Alan, or just wait till December?
We just wait, uh, we, I've developed methodologies, I've tested and hopefully do the calculations.
Yeah, so there'll be a, there's likely to be a more substantial item in relation to Charles Borough Centre on the December agenda. And da da da, free, an action plan for managing waste disposal from a cost and environmental perspective to be prepared urgently. The existing supplier has been given notice and the new supplier will start on the first of December twenty twenty three. That's really positive news that that's been sorted out, so that one can be removed, Karen. Thank you. And that was reported to venues last week. And as a result of that contract, I believe, we'll be recycling things that we haven't previously recycled as well. Good news. The finance officer to investigate the rates for the council chamber as they seem high and that's still outstanding. There is a need to develop a local procurement policy in the autumn, supplier information being disaggregated to ensure. Location can be easily determined. It's work in progress, yeah.
Work in progress. So we just go to inspire, making sure that we, they're all updated. So we can say, where do, where do we purchase goods from, Zedford, Norfolk and other areas.
Okay. The roles and responsibilities document to be updated in a future meeting. What was that relating to?
We tabled the roles and responsibility documents for the for staff and we're supposed to update it and again, it's just one of the. Our faces like to go between.
No, 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 don't worry. It's, you know, lots of these are in progression, you know, it's not a complete standstill, so that's not a problem. Meter readings to be obtained at the end of the financial year to be done at end of March. An analysis was requested on bank charges. So we can remove that one because that's been done. The committee requested the councillor Blackburn be invited to the exit interview for the tea room employee. Employee chose not to undertake the exit interview. Thank you very much for offering to do that, even though it wasn't needed, but that one can be removed. There was a request that the terms of reference of all the committees except allotments who had recently revised their terms of reference be updated. This would help clarify decision making. All committees have now approved their terms of reference and the action plan completed, so that one can also be removed. There was a request that planning train, training be done in person. It was requested that the trainers who had done training at Breckland be approached. Still outstanding as the town clerk was on sick leave, waiting a response from Breckland and we had the update about that earlier. We'll leave it on and once the planning has been arranged or delivered, we can get that one removed.
The planet, the training I'm getting on that won't be in person.
Yeah.
Be by Breckland.
Yeah. The need to possibly rationalize the committee should be planned for the November meeting of this committee. There was also the possibility that some councillors may want to change what committees they had joined. Well, we didn't ask that. Nobody asked to change, so you're you're stuck with what you've got, I'm afraid. Um, we had a good discussion about that earlier and I'm content that we remove that from the action list. Committee officer to send the staff handbook to all members of the committee. This has been done. However. Yeah, I did have a question on that because, um, I think everybody received that. Um, there was no date of adoption at the bottom of it. I don't know if we've got a record of it being adopted.
Ricky's six of September twenty twenty two.
We we discussed this earlier and Alan is going to send a an updated copyright.
Oh, brilliant. That's really useful. I'm a bit of a broken record when it comes to policies and procedures, having an an adoption date and a revision date and reports having offers, so you know, consistency. Sorry, I'm boring. Uh, but that has been done and that can be removed. Any comments from folks about any of the action points? No, well, thank you for, one, two, three, four, five, six, removed. It's a new record. Uh, moving on to four, seven, one, community engagement to approve any media release that is required. Did we discuss anything this evening suitable for a media release?
Uh, as Mac, Mac and I were talking, I think, uh, when we get these uniforms, um, team photo, that's a big press release.
Okay. Uh, item four, seven, two, to consider resolving that pursuant to the Public Bodies Admission to Meetings Act nineteen sixty. The press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial. To the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. The remaining item on the agenda relates to the performance management framework and is confidential because it relates to staffing. Are members content that we exclude the press and public for the remainder of the meeting?
Mm hmm.
Yes. Yep.